I call the City Council meeting for Wednesday, September 14th, 2022 to order. We'll have a moment of silence for you to think about whatever it is is on your mind tonight. Thank you. Alderman McGinnis, if you'd please lead us all in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Mr. Crupp, our deputy city clerk, please call the roll for tonight.
Dunn.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Cornet.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Jobchin.
Here.
And Ortiz.
Here.
Ten.
Present, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. So again, good evening, everyone. As we begin the meeting of the City Council, I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody on any particular electronic device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout their region. We're happy that you're participating in your city government and ask that your participation please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a greater place for everyone, especially for the folks in here. Just a reminder, if you have a cellphone, if you'd put it on silent or turn it off simply so it doesn't get in the way of anybody speaking. If you want to address the council on any particular item, please come to the podium. The microphone's above you. We'd like to know your name, ward or address, and if you're not from here, where you're from. We'll be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us, and you'll have five minutes for your comments. Thank you. Will an alderman please move approval of the City Council meeting minutes for August 24th?
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Any opposed? Okay. City Administrator Ms. Spiegel, any update tonight?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Roger that. Will an alderman please move approval of the report of the committee of the whole for September 7th, 2022?
Move the report.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Okay, we have three proclamations. Welcoming Week, Palmer College of Chiropractic Day, MetroCom NAACP Unit 4019 Day. And I'll read the first one. Welcoming Day. Proclamation, whereas across the country, communities celebrate National Welcoming Week on September 9th through 18th, 2022, and the City of Davenport celebrates its first annual Welcoming Week in 2022 to promote compassion, unity, and respect with a shared vision that all community residents should be valued and protected. And whereas the City of Davenport is home to people of all backgrounds, including those who were not born in the United States but now call it home, and whereas new residents are a vital part of our community, bringing fresh perspectives and new ideas, starting businesses, and contributing to the vibrant diversity that we all value, and whereas today, more than ever, we see an increased need to welcome those fleeing conflict, oppression, and unrest in countries all over the world, and whereas this week, we honor the spirit of unity that is bringing neighbors together across the city of Davenport. By working together, we can achieve greater prosperity and make our community the kind of place where diverse people from around the world feel valued and want to put down roots. And whereas regardless of where we are born or what we look like, we are residents united in our efforts to build a stronger community. By recognizing the contributions that we all make to create a vibrant culture and a growing economy, we make our community more prosperous and more inclusive to all who call it home. And now therefore, we, Mayor Mike Mattson and the Davenport City Council, do hereby proclaim September 9th to 18th, 2022, as Welcoming Week in the City of Davenport, and encourage the business community, civic groups, other units of government, community institutions to undertake initiatives beyond this proclamation to make the region a place of welcome for new and long-term residents alike. I'll accept a motion for this proclamation.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the proclamation. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. And I'll meet Ms. Anne McGlynn at the podium to accept.
Thank you. We'll take a picture and then please say a few things. You can help us. Cheers. Okay? So please tell us who you are and what you're doing.
Sure. Thanks. Hello, thanks for having me. My name is Anne McGlynn, and I'm the founder and executive director of Tapestry Farms. We're a nonprofit urban farm system that invests in refugees who live in the Quad Cities. We are based in Davenport. We have six plots of land that we grow food on in the city of Davenport. Two of them are owned by the city, and we are just moving into Building G on the Annie Wittenmeyer campus, renting from the city. We have appreciated deeply all of the support that elected officials and city staff have given to us over the past five years since we were founded. Right now, we're working with about 10 to 12 families who live in the city of Davenport. We also work with families who live on the Illinois side. As we go into our next five years, we are hoping to help build our welcoming infrastructure in our community so that all who come will feel welcomed and so that they will have the tools and whatever they need so that they can thrive. And we believe that by refugees in particular, because that's who we work with, when they thrive, everyone in our community will thrive. So thank you for this proclamation, Mayor. I really appreciate it, and I hope you have a good night.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the next one is Palmer College of Chiropractic Day. Alderman McGinnis will read that. Alderman McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Whereas what is now known as Palmer College of Chiropractic was founded by D.D. Palmer in 1897 in Davenport, Iowa, and whereas an estimated 50 million Americans seek chiropractic care each year, and whereas Palmer College of Chiropractic, the oldest and largest college of chiropractic in the world, is headquartered in Davenport, and whereas approximately one-third of all doctors of chiropractic are graduates of Palmer College of Chiropractic, and whereas the Palmer Center for Chiropractic Research advances the profession as the largest chiropractic research facility in the nation, and whereas Palmer Chiropractic Clinics provide more than $5 million in pro bono care annually, much of it to veterans and active-duty military members and their families, and whereas Palmer College of Chiropractic is known worldwide as the trusted leader in chiropractic education. And now therefore, we, Mayor Mike Mattson and the Davenport City Council, do hereby proclaim September 18th, 2022, as Palmer College Chiropractic Day in the city of Davenport, and urge all citizens to celebrate the 125th anniversary of the founding of Palmer College of Chiropractic, celebrate Palmer College of Chiropractic as one of the higher education pillars of our community, and recognize the chiropractic profession's continuing contribution to the health and well-being of the citizens of Davenport, the Quad Cities, the United States of America, and the world. Dated this 14th day of September, 2022, I move the proclamation. All in favor?
Aye.
And if I could have Vice Chancellor James O'Connor and Claire Thompson, please meet me at the podium. Thank you.
Congratulations, and we'll have a picture. And then we'll let you see.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, on behalf of Palmer College of Chiropractic, I'd like to say thank you very much for this recognition. You know, when you've been around a long time, 125 years, it's kind of easy for people to forget you're there, and we greatly, greatly appreciate this recognition. We couldn't be happier to be part of the Quad Cities and especially Davenport. We love it here and we appreciate everything that is here, and we appreciate that you appreciate we're here too. So thank you very much and we're looking forward to the next 125 years.
Next one is MetroCom NAACP Unit 4019 Day, and that will be read by Alderman Ortiz. Alderman Ortiz, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. All right. Whereas the National Association for Advancement of Colored People, NAACP, is the oldest civil rights organization in the United States and was created in 1909, and whereas in recognition of the NAACP's work to safeguard the voting rights of Black voters, Latino voters, Asian-American voters, Native American voters, as well as students and young people, seniors, working men and women, and immigrants of all colors, and whereas citizens of the United States of America, white and black, join together to ensure justice and equality for all citizens. And whereas in recognition of the NAACP's commitment to its goal of justice for all during the 55 years that have passed since the tragic assassination of NAACP file organizer Medgar Wiley Evers on June 12th, 1963, and whereas the MetroCom NAACP Unit 4019 of Davenport, Iowa, continues that historical and proactive tradition of justice for all citizens in the struggle for the civil and political rights in the city of Davenport through numerous community events such as Job Junction and Expungement Workshop, the Community Resources Fair, Youth Recognition Dinner, youth scholarships, the Freedom Fund banquet, and image awards held on Saturday, September 24th, 2022. And whereas the city of Davenport acknowledges the MetroCom NAACP Unit 4019 for its dedication to the struggle for the civil and political rights of citizens of color, now therefore, we, Mayor Mike Mattson and the Davenport City Council, do hereby proclaim Saturday, September 24th, 2022, as MetroCom NAACP Unit 4019 Day in the city of Davenport, and call upon all citizens of our great city to join with me in congratulating the members of this organization on their dedication to bring in unity and justice to all residents of our community, dated this 14th day of September, 2022. Do I have a motion to accept this proclamation?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will meet Michael Guster, President NAACP Branch 4019.
I want you to know that we at the NAACP MetroCom Branch 4019 is very appreciative of this recognition and very appreciative of all the work that the council and the city staff is doing to make this little city a place where we all can live and work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next item, petition communications from anyone? Alderman Ortiz.
Thank you, Your Honor. I will be having a fourth ward meeting September 19th, next Monday night, from 6:00 to 7:00 at the Kepi Building located in the Mississippi Valley Fairgrounds. I'm excited. We'll be talking about the upcoming construction on Hickory Grove and Central Park, so that'll be exciting to get that area fixed up. And then we'll also be talking about the one-way conversion. So if you have time, please come next Monday night from 6:00 to 7:00 at the Kepi Building. And one last thing, I've got a lot of calls. Please slow down during school hours. I get a lot of calls with a lot of people traveling fast in the school zones, so let's protect our youth, make sure nothing happens that, you know, somebody's going to regret just for going a little faster than they should. So thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Ortiz. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of things. First, it was my great pleasure on Saturday to represent the city at the Veterans, the Quad City Veterans Outreach Center luncheon. It was a great turnout at the fairgrounds, great location in Mr. Ortiz's ward. But I want to thank the, you know, hearing about the services that this group offers. They said that their members, some 2,000 strong, certainly had challenges through the pandemic. They continued to work and do the work that they do every day, and I'm very grateful that we have them in the community, and it was wonderful to see everybody on Saturday. Also wanted to mention that this weekend, the Gold Coast Home Tour is back after four years of being off. It will be Saturday and Sunday, September 17th and 18th, 12 noon to 4:00 p.m. Five houses, the German-American Heritage Center, the Jip Home and Grocery are all open. Tickets can be purchased at the houses and information at www.davenportgoldcoast.com. So we'd love to see you in the Gold Coast this weekend. And finally, our third ward meeting for September will be Monday, September 19th, at 6:30 p.m. right here in council chambers. Our guest will be Chief Bladel. As he starts on this new journey, we wanted to have an opportunity for folks from the third ward to come and be able to sit with him in a more intimate setting than he may see in some cases, and just talk with him and find out what his plans are, and we can all talk about the city together. So hope you can join us on Monday, September 19th, 6:30 right here. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, there's lots of white and blue herons along the river and especially down at Credit Island, especially from Leclerc Park on down. So if you want to go look at some herons, it's really lovely. Also, I just wanted to say I attended the Surface Transportation Board meeting last night about the EIS, and I've done a lot of these meetings, I've attended a lot of these meetings, and this one was very well organized. It was very respectful on everybody's part. A lot of information was shared, and I just want to say, good job on the public meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Alderman Kelly.
Thank you, sir. I also want to say I enjoyed that meeting. Only thing I did not like was the hour before of meandering. That was a lot, but it was a good meeting. I learned a lot of things. I want to thank some of my colleagues for supporting me and Alderman Jobchin. Over the weekend, we had our fund rate, well, I don't know what you want to call it. We had school supplies for teachers to give to the students here in Davenport of the students that were really in need and didn't get a chance to get the things that they needed. We didn't have a lot of folks to come through, but we really had a good time. But I think the joy in it for me was when we dropped off at McKinley, Washington, Eisenhower, Sudlow, Centro, and how the teachers were much appreciated of me and of Alderman Jobchin of our effort. So I just want to thank him and Lee and Dunn for supporting me through that venture. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Alderman Jobchin.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And really, the kudos for that should be to Alderman Kelly for getting that going. Thanks for letting me tag along. It was a good, good event for Sunday, and most importantly, Alderman Kelly, I'm just glad you're not an Iowa State fan.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin. I'm glad no one's an Iowa State fan, no. All right. Anyone else? Thank you. Okay. We'll move to individual approval items on the discussion agenda. We have one. It's a second consideration for an ordinance amending Chapter 10.96 of the Minnesota Code of Davenport, Iowa, entitled Schedules by making various changes to Schedule 2, 5, and 14 to implement a change in traffic flow for Third and Fourth Streets between River Drive and Marquette Street. Is there any public with comment? Again, just as a reminder, name, order, address, if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from in five minutes.
Brian Swiner, Davenport, Rock Island, Nittany. I spoke many times for this council. Why? Because I'm trying to make a difference. But to approve a project, you don't have an exact cost. DOT, they're going to approve, how do you redesign entrances? Then wanting to add to it after the third, that's, how's it going to be laid out? We just give direction. We're still told. You try that in a business, you're going to get fired, folks. You're responsible to the taxpayers. To approve something, you have no idea how much it's going to fully cost is ridiculous. You were elected officials, all of you, to represent the taxpayers. Yes, it's grant, some grant money and other stuff, but what happens if this project with the redesign turns into $10 million and you've approved it? Who's on the hook? The taxpayers. Who's to say DOT is going to approve it? You know, this should have never been brought up until we had more information. DOT approval, cost per intersection, what exactly it's going to be? Stop sign, redesign, new lights, new signs? Not just, well, during the third reading, we'll just add to it and take it down to Division. That's utterly shameful, this council. If you're going to put a proclamation or a change, have more information. We're a better city than that. We're a lot better than that. We just got to credit it. Again, another accreditation. How does this look? To me, ridiculous. And to say, well, this city, this city, what's the percentages of cities that have converted? 10, 11% of all cities and of our population? You have thousands signing petitions to say no. You have phone call after phone call. We don't want it. I urge this council to turn this matter down and come back later. I'm not saying I'll ever support it, but I'm not saying with more information, better numbers, better figures, then maybe the citizens will support it more. But right now, I'm ashamed of this city and what they're trying to jam through is ridiculous.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Dale Gilmore, and I live in the sixth ward. You knew I'd have something to say. Math was always one of my favorite subjects. May I take this opportunity to teach some of you about numbers? We're told that 80 to 85 different cities have eliminated their one ways in favor of two-way streets. Muscatine, Iowa, is often cited as one of those examples. Muscatine, Iowa, in the 2020 census, has a population of 23,797 people. How many cities in the U.S. have a population of at least 23,797? The only breakdown I could easily and very quickly find is there are 781 cities in the United States with a population of more than 50,000. 50,000. That's more than twice the population of Muscatine. I don't think it'd be a stretch to say that there are more than 1,500 cities in the United States with a population over 23,797. If anyone wishes to challenge my guesstimate, I'll be happy to research it further and get back to them. So 80 cities out of 1,000, out of 1,500 is 5.33%. That's roughly one out of every 20. Hardly an overwhelming majority. Oh, wait, that's not a majority at all. 19 out of 20 have not done it. Now that's an overwhelming majority. What am I missing here? Next, the DDP says that 2,000 people live in downtown. For purposes of discussion, I'll accept their number. The population of Davenport is right at 100,000, so two out of every 100 Davenport residents live downtown. Using simple math, that means 98 out of every 100 Davenport residents do not live in downtown. Again, an overwhelming majority. A few weeks ago, there was a dog and pony show put on by downtown business and property owners. You remember, my name's Joe Blow, and I own the property of 123 Main Street and 124 Brady and 125 Harrison. And what they failed to mention is they don't even live in Davenport. Most of those who spoke live in Bettendorf. Yet they think Davenport residents should pony up millions of dollars to increase their investment in downtown Davenport. Let me give you another example. If you go to Division, add back in the traffic signals and reconfigure Third and Fourth River Drive, then the project comes in at a cost of at least $4 million and possibly as much as $6 million. For discussion, let's be ultra-conservative and use the $4 million figure. There are eight wards in Davenport. If you divide the $4 million evenly by eight wards, that's $500,000 that could be used in each ward to fix streets and alleys. That's right, a half a million dollars to fix streets and alleys in each ward. So if you're a ward alderman and you vote for this change, you're voting to give up half a million dollars worth of street and alley improvements in your ward. I trust that the ward aldermen who vote for this change can all easily explain to their constituents that their streets and alleys in their ward aren't being repaired because you chose to give your half million dollars to the 2% of the population and the out-of-town investors in downtown Davenport. I'm sure they'll understand. And finally, 70% of the people don't want to, and it's no secret that I'm one of those. 70% may not be an overwhelming majority, but it's definitely a majority. Any of you who believe that those 70% will forget how you voted on this issue a year from now are greatly mistaken. You make people mad and they don't forget.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. If there are, if there's anyone else, if you could be standing by the pole, come up, sir, that's fine. The next one, so I know if there's anybody else. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. My name's Michael Gata, sixth ward, and I'm against it because I don't think we have the money, funds to spend on it. We have a lot of other streets that need repair. You see a lot of construction from time to time. I just, coming down here, I seen a number of streets that were closed coming down from sixth ward because of construction probably. If you turn these streets to two ways and you have, Davenport is an older town, has a lot of older infrastructure, you have repairs, what's going to happen? You're going to have to clog up these streets with construction, whereas now, if you, with the one-way, it's wide enough that you can still work on it and still get people through. There was something about it could be used for a route around the flood zone. Has anybody checked into the railroad bridge down here on Fourth Street? I think it's maybe 13-2. Are you going to be able to get semis underneath that? Or are you just going to create another problem like Brady Street and Harrison Street where semis are going to be running into it all the time? You see other towns are doing it, and I do agree with the young man or that we just talked about, Muscatine. Muscatine and Davenport are not quite the same. You know, you need to look at maybe Bettendorf. Is Bettendorf talking about changing theirs to two ways or sticking with one way? I worked in Dubuque, and in Dubuque, there was two-way streets, and I had to cross them. I could not cross them because of the traffic. I had to turn right, go down a block, and then turn left to get off of that street to get to the other side of town. So there's, you know, are you going to have a control, every intersection of some sort, either stop signs or lights? And right now, if it's an uncontrolled intersection, you're trying to go from north to south, which, or towards the river, right now, you have to mainly look left for the one-way. You have to look oncoming traffic. If it's not controlled, when it changes, you're going to have to look all four directions. That's not, I wouldn't consider that safer. So I do appreciate everybody that's, you know, concerned about it. I've talked to my alderman about it, and I think that it'd be a very good idea to turn it down. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. My name's Tim Baldwin. I do not live in Davenport. However, since 2014, I've invested nearly $20 million in this city. I own Front Street Brewery, I have a development company, Bluffstone. I redeveloped the Democrat lofts and the Pierce School lofts in the village. I'm here, I decided to make that investment here because of the progress and the growth that this city has, and the city has continued to thrive. We felt it was the best place to make those investments in the Quad Cities. Early in my career, I made similar investments in downtown Rock Island, and the lack of changes there and the lack of support from the council and from an organization like the DDP caused us to move our business across the river. And that, this change is uncomfortable. I get that for a lot of people, but the change is necessary, and for the city to continue to thrive, the businesses downtown need this support. We need our customers to be able to get to us when there are, when there are construction projects taking place, for example. Right now, on Second, thankfully, we have one lane back open, but you know where my Front Street Pub Needy is located on the corner of Perry and River Drive? People that come downtown that aren't familiar with downtown have a very difficult time maneuvering around.[1790.65] Right now, on Second, thankfully, we have one lane back open, but you know where my Front Street Pub Needy is located, on the corner of Perry and River Drive? People that come downtown that aren't familiar with downtown have a very difficult time maneuvering around when there's construction taking place, especially on Second. You all remember what it was like in 2019 when we tried to stay open or open back up after the flood, and other times prior to the breach of the flood wall when businesses were still open and we were operating behind the flood wall, but streets were closed. People couldn't get to our business and our business declined dramatically. I know downtown Davenport very well, and even for me, to get my way around the city when Second is closed like it is right now is very, a big hassle. And, you know, I just had that conversation with Kyle Carter earlier today about just trying to get here, for example, from where I parked my car, I've got to cross the one-ways and make my way back to get here. They've outlasted their time, and it's time we make a change. Progress is sometimes painful, but those of us that have businesses thriving downtown would like them to continue to thrive. Two of my properties that house a number of residents in the city of Davenport, many of whom work in downtown, have all expressed those concerns to me. I realize they don't make up the majority of Davenport, but they certainly make up the majority of those of us who work and live in downtown. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Candy Pasternak. I live in the sixth ward and I work in the third ward. And I am a member, proud member of Downtown Davenport Partnership, and I think the council is aware of our stance on this. I think that we've done a good job of sharing with the council the rationale behind supporting this endeavor, and I would echo the support that DDP has provided for this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no, okay, again, if there's someone else, if you'd please, so I know. Thank you.
Hello, Council. John McDermott. I live in Eighth Ward. I am a business owner in downtown Davenport, so a resident and an investor of the city. You guys all know where I stand. I am supremely in support of this. I would caution anyone who thinks you can only look one way, on a one-way, that it's very dangerous. We have multiple people that go the wrong way. Currently, we have that littered on Second, Second Street right now. I think this is the right thing for the city. I think long-term, this is the right thing for not only downtown, but the Quad Cities as a whole. We're continuing to build down here. We are adding, I think, a hundred and eighty units right next to the YMCA. The new building right on Second next to us, Reagan is coming downtown. We're continuing to add outside people from the marketplace. We will choke that off at Third Street. It's just bound to happen if we don't make some changes. I think this is an avenue to be more welcoming and to show those outside businesses that are in communities like Cedar Rapids, like Des Moines, that this is a positive growth message for small businesses to come to our downtown. Not only just those in the community or those in Bettendorf or those in Moline, but people who are regional to see us as a pro-business, pro-economic development area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Will an alderman please move second consideration? Okay, there's a motion of second. Is there any discussion from alderfolks? Alderwoman Lee?
Thank you very much. I'm sure you're all aware of my concerns with lack of information about the need for action and where the city said that we don't have time to find that out. I still have not seen a list of businesses that are for or against it just in the downtown area. And if you're over by Marquette, those businesses over there or even over to Division, so I don't have enough information there. I've explained why I have extensive concerns about the River Drive intersections, and I spent a lot of time when the boat came in watching people trying to cross the street as well as the cars negotiating and trying to picture that as two ways. Difficult. I think it's a dangerous intersection the way it's configured now, and I don't think we can fix that with paint. And I'm also concerned about Marquette and Division. I think neither one of them is safe. I think the best one is Telegraph, and of course, the people down there don't want it. So, you know, people have been saying, well, this city did it and that city did it. So being the curious type, we looked up Peoria because that was one of the places that was identified. And we found an article from February 2022 that talked about Jefferson Ave. and Adams Ave., a major conversion from one-way to two-way streets, and they explain what they think is going to be a good thing for Peoria with that. However, what caught my attention was to convert these two-way streets will cost Peoria fourteen-point-two million dollars over four years. Twelve million is construction and over two million is just engineering, just trying to make sure we get it right or they get it right. They did try to go for a grant, they didn't get it. So over half of the money from the project, eight-point-six million will be raised from the state motor fuel tax, and then local motor fuel taxes will cover another two-point-nine million of the cost with a federal grant of one-point-eight. So any money that is used from the state and local fuel taxes are money that can't be used for other things in the city. So they didn't get the five million they wanted. So I guess my concern with all this is, you know, we've been throwing things around, you know, Peoria's done it, Dubuque's done it, blah, blah, blah. We've been talking about articles. We've been saying, studies show, but again, I'm not convinced, and I'm especially concerned about the costs that might be associated with this. And if it doesn't work the way we're planning it with paint, then we're going to have to fix it. So I just wanted to tell you what, oh, and it's about the same length. It's actually eight blocks in Peoria, and we're looking at, if we go to Marquette, we're looking at about thirteen or fourteen blocks. So their fourteen-point-two million and our one-point-six, I'm just wondering how this could even work. So I just wanted to talk about one of the cities that's been discussed. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Jobson?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank again everybody, you know, in the city, especially those sixth ward residents that keep reaching out to me. I still encourage everyone to call, write, email, text, whatever it is, you know, as we continue through this process, knowing that we're at the second of three, three readings on this. And so I appreciate that, you know, for, for the record, you know, I will let those know that, you know, I have been receiving more sixth ward residents reaching out to me that are supportive. Still, they do not outweigh those that are opposed. But again, you know, I want to let people know that. I voted yes on the first reading. I'm prepared to vote no this evening. My two bugaboo's really are the East and West Terminus. As Alderwoman Lee mentioned, the River Drive intersections, I do have significant concerns there. And regardless of where that goes, you know, I made mention of my conversation with Kyle Carter two weeks ago now, I think. You know, we will have to do something with those intersections regardless of whatever happens with this conversion, but that's one of my big issues. The Western Terminus, again, I do believe we need to go farther west than Marquette Street, and if we're not going to do that, then I think we actually need to shorten it. We either need to go farther or we need to come down and make it Harrison, you know, shorten up the project. The reason why I say that is, you know, I believe, as Alderwoman Lee had made, mentioned before, and I quoted her here, while this is a Davenport issue with a downtown component, this, I also believe this is an economic development issue with a safety component of it, right? And one-way traffic going into, coming onto two-way traffic is a huge concern, and, and I want to see that minimized as much as possible. The safety component that we usually talk about with this are those intersections where there are left turns on red or double left turns. So we're talking about Third and Brady, Harrison and Third, Brady and Fourth, and then if you get all the round, all the way around to Fourth and Harrison again. I will acknowledge that, yes, you know, those, those intersections, when pedestrians are trying to cross, especially on that northern portion of Third Street, when you're, when you're going across Brady, there's that potential for injury there, and we want to minimize that. But I also think if we have two-way traffic there, what is less risky? One-way traffic that has to focus on the light and maybe a pedestrian crossing that they need to avoid, or two-way traffic that's turning left that has to focus on the light because there's not going to be an arrow there? Have to focus on that light, whether they can get through, whether there's a car coming and there's a pedestrian. So you're adding another variable there. So I do have, have some issues with that in regards to safety. So while I do believe this is an economic development issue with a safety component, you know, I have, again, some of those, those bugaboo's. Another thing, you know, we've made mention tonight, it's been made and mentioned tonight, comparisons with other cities. Again, you know, we do have to look at our unique factors. You know, it kind of, kind of comes down to like dealing with flood mitigation, right? We have Moline that has a flood wall, we have Rock Island that has a flood wall, we have Bettendorf that has a flood wall, we have Dubuque that has a flood wall. We're not doing a flood wall because it's not for us, so we need to continue to, to address our concerns, piece this out as how it's unique for Davenport, continue to find out what's best for Davenport, which I know we'll do. You know, we, we have a great council here that, you know, has, has some great discussions, and yes, Alderman Kelly, I'm going to land the plane. But, you know, I look forward to these continued discussions. I'm going to vote no this evening. I do have my concerns and, and we'll keep going forward there. So thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Gr-
Thank you, Your Honor. I did want to comment on Peoria, and I can tell you, tell you why the price tag was fourteen million dollars compared to the one-point-seven million dollars that we're looking at. When Peoria is going through the process, they're going to do a lot of concrete work where they narrow their streets, put in parklets and bumpouts and, and things like that. So the majority of the cost in their money is in hard infrastructure, which, as you know, doing the concrete is very expensive, which is ideal and would be something I would love to entertain, but, you know, part of the reason we are where we are is, you know, we're trying to do this in a very fiscally responsible and conservative way. The other thing I'll say is I'm having a very hard time buying the argument that it's not possible to convert one-way streets back to two-way streets when they were originally designed to be two-street, two-way streets and existed that way for decades. So the fact that some are saying it's not possible, I just don't buy that argument. They once were, they can be again. And then as far as the, the safety concerns on the intersections of River Drive and Third and Fourth Street, they already exist. You can already make a left-hand turn from River Drive on to Fourth Street, and that, that's really that turn radius that, that we're, we're talking about. It already exists in the current state. So just wanted to, to voice my opinion on those few items.
Thank you.
I hesitate to speak too much because I don't know if I have a lot to add that I haven't already entered into the public record. There's one point that I wanted to make or reinforce, and, and really, one of the most unique things about this issue as it becomes before council is some of the most contentious things that we deal with is when there are things affecting neighborhoods and the neighbors gather together and say, please don't do that in my, in my neighborhood, please, not in my backyard. And this is actually a hundred percent on its head. The Downtown Development Group, which is a collaboration of people who willingly pay an additional tax to make their neighborhood better, are contributing money to help make this happen. They're paying for public infrastructure. They're actually saying, yes, please, in my backyard, more business, more residences, yes, LMI housing, yes, create more density. And they're doing all of this by created, by, they're doing all of this, and yet they're not creating any added miles of infrastructure. So it's a mixed-use neighborhood who's trying to reinforce what they're already doing and, and make them a higher property value and a more vibrant neighborhood. And there are others who just don't quite understand why we would want to do this and sometimes using a more suburban sensibility to say, that's not necessarily how I want to drive through that area, that's not necessarily how I want to park, or I don't understand why those dollars would make any sense. I'm not a great order, but I have these soaring monologues in my head, and on my way to the meeting today, I was thinking, this is, this is kind of like going to the moon, because if you think about going to the moon, it's expensive. We don't have to do that. The why is not clear to all or perhaps most. Its gains are not going to be easily measured. We already have a space program. John Glenn looked real good up there. We already have a downtown. Why do we need to go further? I've never read this speech before, but it's not a bad comparison. "The exploration of space will go ahead whether we join it or not, and it's one of the great adventures of all time. Any nation which expects to be the leader of other nations can expect to stay behind in this," the screen's broken. "can't expect to stay behind in this race for space." Why go to the moon? And he has some really soaring things here, like why climb Mount Everest and why fly to the Atlantic, but I was happy to see that he even tried to make a joke. He said, why does Rice play Texas? And maybe that's the most apt comparison, because we're not Chicago, but we're Rice, and Rice is proud of it. I often compare living in a smaller city like Davenport to going to a small liberal arts school, because the kids at that school don't always compare themselves to the bigger cities and say, well, why even have a party? They create their own fun. So why does Rice play Texas? We choose to do it not because it's easy, but because it's hard. The reality is, this is actually not that hard. This is a break, a breathtaking pace, and such a pace cannot help but create new ills as it dispels old, new ignorance, new problems, new dangers. Surely, the opening vistas of space promise high cost and hardships as well as high reward. So it is not surprising that some would have us stay here where we are a little longer to rest, to wait. But this city of Houston, this state of Texas, this country of the United States was not built by those who waited and rested and wished to look behind them. This country was conquered by those who moved forward and those, and so will space. So perhaps that's a little silly, but it's not a bad parable. It's not a bad example. This isn't something that we have to do, but those that believe in this city think that downtown holds more promise than perhaps is easily seen by others. Downtown is the one area that, one of the areas in Davenport that has enough cachet that, you know, it's not necessarily the most logical thing to live in downtown. Nothing about downtown is convenient, but there's a certain mixture of culture and vibrance that says, I could choose to live in any part of Davenport, I could choose to live in any surrounding community, but I choose the downtown. And, and so we, we're just looking to reinforce that, and, and if perhaps I haven't been eloquent enough in the past, maybe my silly example here might, might help you understand where we're coming from. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Very good. I'll just add a couple of quick comments. I just let the council know, two people I had a long discussion with, and then they gave me their thoughts. For people who know the Gills, they've invested tons of money here, and they are extremely positive and in favor of the conversion. And then Kent Pilcher wanted me to share, he's the president of Estes Construction and the new community foundation president, wanted me to express his sincere approval and support and ask the council to approve this. And then the only thing I'll say is, you've heard my speech before, so I'm not going to go long, but we remember what the downtown was like many years ago for us that grew up here and the progress in, in forward-thinking over the years has been extraordinary, and I'm encouraging us to continue that. So if there's no one else, Brian, please call the roll for second consideration. Cornet?
No.
Dickman?
Yes.
Lee?
No.
Dunn?
No.
Condon?
Yes.
Jobson?
No.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Kelly?
No.
Grip?
Yes.
And Ortiz?
Yes.
Five yeses and five noes, Your Honor. Roger. Roger. So I vote, and I vote yes. The next area is motion of approval of all items on consent. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And second, Brian, please call the roll for consent. I'm sorry, who moved in second in that? Who's second?
Second.
Thank you. Condon?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Cornet?
Yes.
And Jobgen?
Yes, except for I abstain on Uncle Norm's fireworks on number twenty.
Thank you. And I know a couple of others mentioned their abstentions last week, so I have those noted. So ten yeses and the abstentions are noted. Very good. Thank you. Consent approved. Next item, is there any other ordinances, motions, or resolutions? There are none from this evening. Next item, is there any public or business for anything that was not discussed on the agenda? Very good. Is there any other reports, Ms. Spiegel? Very good. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion is second to adjourn. All in favor?